...council meeting, March the 5th, 2018, to order. Chuck, can you please send it?
Yes. Your Honor, thank you for everything you've done for us. Be with us, help us decide, make this good a city for the city and the citizens of the city. Lord, be with all the people represented here and their families, give them a safe trip home. Be with all our firefighters and our policemen, our soldiers and our EMTs and everybody that works for the city. Keep us all safe. Thank you, Lord, for all you've done. Amen.
Mr. Pointe?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you all have a copy of the agenda for March 5th, 2018, before you? Are there any changes to the agenda for tonight?
I make the motion, we approve.
All in favor? Okay. Now, for the approval of the minutes for February the 12th, 2018, council meeting. I get a motion to approve this.
I make the vote.
All in favor? Department reports, Ms. Mahan.
Financial report. There is a reconciled statement of revenues and expenditures ending January 31st, 2018, included with this report. Please review at your convenience. There's also some out there in the hallway for the audience if anyone's interested. Maintenance. The ongoing rain has kept Mr. Fawcett busy. He has been making sure that roads and streets are safe and clear. During the days that have been clear, he has already started mowing in order to keep the grass from getting out of control. After driving around the city, we have set up a schedule of projects that need to be completed once weather allows, including mulching the nature trail and cleaning, staining, and painting the bridges. Sanitation. Knock on wood, always good and in order with the sanitation department. Payments continue to come in, and we are still adding new accounts, and the truck is working as it should. Both Mr. Chapmans are a wonderful asset to the city, and residents love seeing their warm smiles and appreciate their willingness to go the extra mile. I am always getting compliments on our trash service, and many residents hope that we decide one day to make the city service exclusive, which would bring in more revenue and keep the other trash companies from putting extra wear and tear on our streets. This is something that we might want to look into sometime in the future. Information on the April 2nd council meeting. We will be discussing and voting on Pickens County service delivery items, as well as some other things that are in the works, but we're not yet ready for tonight's meeting. If there is anything that the council would like to see addressed, please let me know, and I'll add it to the agenda. As always, if you all have something that you want to see addressed, just contact me, and I'll put it on there. Project updates. I started this new category at last month's meeting and hope that it will cut down on unanswered questions by providing regular updates on items not being addressed in other areas of the agenda. Update on computers for City Hall. At the January 2nd, 2018, meeting, the council approved the purchase of new computers and software for City Hall. The final invoice was received, and we came in just under budget at $2,499.50. This was surprising, is that there was a lot more work involved than we originally anticipated. There was a serious need for IT maintenance and to fix things that were done incorrectly for many years. I'm grateful that we're now on track and hope to keep things this way by allowing a professional to maintain the computer equipment rather than having random people do it, which only leads to disaster in the long run. I want to take a moment to thank Mr. Bell for all of his hard work and patience during this process. I am grateful that there are people with his talent and knowledge out there who are willing to serve the city and whip us into shape when we need it. I can tell you all, he was here a lot more than he chose to charge us for, and I argued with him belligerently, because, you know, when someone works, they deserve to get paid for it, and he just adamantly refused. So, maybe so could maybe he could beat it out of him. But, I mean, it wasn't, the setup of the new computers wasn't the problem, it was that the other computers had just been set up incorrectly, and viruses and things of that nature. So, in order to get everything working properly, he had to fix that so that we didn't continue down the path of destruction.
Tina was able to save us some money, because what was it, 20 hours extra?
Yeah.
Something like that? So, she was able to, you know, we went back to her and said, hey, this was what you closed. And he gave it to her, and, you know, told her, you know, you're right, it was really what's coming bad, and like he did right by the city.
So, next, I'm sorry, hold on a second, my paper's taking. Update on the road repair issue on Verrill Way. We discovered that there was some deterioration near two culverts which are positioned across from one another. We immediately assessed the situation and decided that this was a fix that was beyond the city's abilities. I've contacted several companies for them to take a look at it, and while only one came out, I feel that they are more than capable of making the necessary repairs. The long and short is that the seams where the drainage pipes met under the road came loose over time, which caused improper drainage and washout under the asphalt and concrete beside the two culverts. This job should be done in two days' time, once the weather allows the work to be done. We were assured that the road is safe and have added safety codes where the holes are until there were repairs. They had someone go actually in the pipe and assess and make sure that there wasn't an issue.
Has anybody been out there this week? I know that last week, we had, we had a lot of rain.
Yeah. So, Ricky went out there and checked it today, and it seems that it hasn't gotten any worse.
Have we heard from the company that?
Yes, they're trying, they're moving projects around so that we can take precedence, because, I mean, every company at this point is behind, some are two or three months behind because of the weather, unusually rainy and cold weather that we've had, but they were in the process today of moving around some projects so that they can get this taken care of as a priority, so. All right. Miscellaneous. At the last meeting during public comment, Mr. Kellitt spoke of an item published in regards to the Pickens County Splatte Schedule. I believe his concern was that they were reporting inaccurate spending amounts for the city of Nelson. I immediately realized, excuse me, I contacted the county for clarification, and they also sent me a copy of the ad, which is in y'all's binders, and I have extra copies in case anyone in the audience wants any. I immediately realized that the numbers being shown are not what Nelson spent, but rather what the county gave to the city. Included with this is a report of the Splatte Schedule, and in the section above is where the county has listed their Splatte expenditures as far as projects are concerned. I'm sorry, this is going to be behind your revenues and expenditures. Everybody who receives Splatte has to publish this same thing. The counties are just a little bit differently, because not only do they have to publish what they spent in terms of their projects, but they also have to include in their advertisement, which is on the bottom, what they gave the city, each individual city that takes place. Whereas, when the municipalities report, we're just reporting on what we spent in terms of Splatte. So, the bottom section, like I said, is just a report of what the county has sent the cities for funding of the current Splatte cycle. So, just to clarify, the ad is correct and nothing further needs to be done.
Good. Any other questions about that? No. Thank you for taking in that one.
Okay. It has come to my attention, due to contact from some residents in the city, that there is a petition being circulated in reference to the city losing its charter due to disbandment of the police department. Apparently, some people are under the impression that the city does not offer enough services to keep its charter. Please refer to the document included with this report titled Municipal Incorporation Requirements Under Georgia Law, from the Georgia municipal website. If any audience members would like to see this, I have additional copies available. That's going to be behind your, behind that ad. If you could just go to page 2 for me here. It says, according to the statute, code section 36-30-7.1, an active municipality must provide at least three of the following services, either directly or by contract. So, it gives a list. We have to provide three, we provide six. B, C, D, I, J, and K. The fire protection and fire safety is through contract that we have with Cherokee County. I'm going to take a moment to read what was posted in regards to this on our website, because I think that it covers what needs to be said. Some residents have contacted me in reference to a petition being circulated. I am thankful that they took time to contact City Hall rather than further spreading inaccurate rumors. Facts are our friends. The disbanding of the police department has not affected our charter in any way. According to Georgia state law, a municipality has to offer at least three out of a list of services, and we offer six. See the information below, and I had quoted what I had showed you from that information. We live in a wonderful small town where the history is rich and the people down to earth. Do not let the few that have nothing better to do than stir up negativity and drama ruin it for everyone. As always, if there are any questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to contact City Hall. We consider it a pleasure and a privilege to serve our residents. I got a lot of positive feedback from that, I wanted to nip it in the bud. I mean, most residents were aware of the fact that it was untrue, but there were some that aren't as familiar with law that were concerned that they were going to lose their little town. And by addressing them feeling comfortable enough to call and address, I encourage that for the residents, if there is a question about anything, to contact us, and we'll address it.
Rightly so.
So, qualifying for the city of Nelson, special election started today to fill the council seat vacated by Mr. Hamlin. Qualifying will continue until Wednesday, March 7th, at 4:30 p.m. This election will take place on May 27th. I am happy to say that all the elected officials in the city of Nelson have now attended their state mandated newly-elected officials training. This is something that is required, but when ignored for many years, and we are now on track in setting a positive trend of attending such training. I will be attending clerk training on March 22nd through 23rd, which will take me two classes closer to completing the certification. Once again, the clerk certification is a four-year program, I'm on track to complete it, and under two. So, I mean, cramping it as much as I can. Last but not least, I want to wish a happy birthday to Mr. Queen and Ms. Reel, who is not here this evening, whose special day stays placed this month. How does an extra-long meeting this month sound for a president?
All right, so, anybody have any questions about that information? I'm just going to ask, has all the council members had an opportunity to take a look at the service delivery plan? If you've not, if you would do that, and give back with Tina with your comments sometime here in the next couple of weeks, because I have to do that, and I want feedback from everybody.
Yeah, I'll make copies of that, because it's one of those things that it's better to have in your hand, to be able to read it and mark it and highlight it. It's a lot of information, but what I'll try to do is segregate what directly pertains to Nelson, because otherwise, it's like a 500-page document.
Yeah, just pull out what they did in Nelson.
Pull out, yeah. So, this is part, the service delivery strategy is something that has to be renewed when the comprehensive plan has to be renewed. It's just one more fun part of this whole comprehensive plan thing, so.
And one other question about maintenance. Where are we at with the gate? That we were talking about maybe getting the poles put up and blocking off that area.
Well, I was looking into, at one point in time, we did have the poles that went into the ground, but we have been unable to find them, so I'm not sure if they went in a dumpster or went by the wayside. Ricky had checked in, you know, like all the storage areas and in the baseball, because we thought they were in the concession stand, and we haven't found them there either, so I guess the next step would be to get some pricing for some materials, or, you know, try to figure out some different methods to block that off.
When I went and I looked at that, I followed where the posts go. You can go around it on either side. So, is there a way that we can get the post extended and maybe put one of the chain link?
Yes, and that's what we were looking at doing, getting some kind of poles that we can obviously concrete in, since they're going to be out of the road. The purpose of those was to be able to be removable as needed.
Yeah.
But what we can do is get the, if we extend it out, concrete them into the ground, once the ground ever dries up, and then have a chain that we can put across.
I just think the way that it is now, it's not going to be a deterrent. They're just going to go right around it all night long, and I think there's room for both sides to just go right around it. I can let it ride in my Jeep or in a truck, so.
Yeah, and then it tears the grass up and turns, we don't want to do that, so.
That's all I have. Set off for you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Tina. Let's see, Mr. Simmons, do you have a report for us for this month?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. We had a quiet February. We only had nine calls. Breakdowns in your report, one traffic stop and alarm, three suspicious persons, one suspicious vehicle. In inspection, residents kept, and we did the TPO service. We had no significant calls for service, everything was pretty well retrieved. We did escort one funeral procession into Nelson to the church on the 19th of February. Just to let you know, overall, all through our little sector of the county, everything was down, we were down almost 700 calls over January, for, just for my precinct. So, it wasn't just Nelson that was nice and quiet, we kept everybody quiet.
That's nice.
Doing what we can to keep us nice and quiet.
I want to remind everybody that the town hall meeting that we're having, it's the 20th of March, it's a Tuesday. It's at Revolution Church, which is on Union Hill Road, right off of Coming Highway. Start at 6:30. I'm knocking on wood that it won't last more than an hour or so.
Where is, what is that, one more time?
Revolution Church. It's on Union Hill Road, right off of Highway 20. You can see it from Coming Highway. There's a traffic light there. Union Hill, be on your right, or on your left, and Harmony Drive goes up to the one and right goes up to the other, Reserve. And you make that, make that left, and there it is.
So, if you're going toward Kent Marketplace when you're on Highway 20?
Yeah.
It's got a big giant R on, Cleveland's in Cleveland.
And I'll have a big sign out, you can't, you won't be able to listen.
It's Revolution?
Revolution Church.
At 6:30.
6:30.
And everyone's invited to this?
Everybody's invited, I'm trying to, anybody that just wants to come out. Basically, our town hall meeting is, it does a couple of things. One, it introduces the sheriff's office to the people, and just to kind of let you know, we're people too, and we have a stake in the community. I'll keep the boring statistical part very short. It'd be more like, I'll have, I'll have pictures of all my deputies, so you can see what they are, some of the stuff we've done in the community. It's more of a question and answer thing. I've put out to all my community contacts, anybody that has any, you know, questions they want addressed, we can bring them up. The only things that I didn't want to talk about, and I told everybody, it's like, I can't answer anything about the Highway 20 expansion, that seems to be on everybody's mind. That's DOT, that ain't nothing. I got nothing to do with it, so. By the way, we did, we did one of these last spring, late spring, and it was a huge success, so I'm going to double the people that show up and make it a more, huger success.
And I'll post the information on the website as well, in case anyone's interested with the details and the address and everything.
And I'll keep pestering, anybody that's on my email list, I'll send, I send out, like, once a month, then when it gets a little closer, it's like every two weeks, and then when it gets closer, it's like once a week. So, any questions on, we're happy to be here.
That brings us to unfinished business. Look at him in the background.
Discuss updates on liquidation of police vehicles and equipment. In order to keep everyone up to date, I wanted to go over where we are at in the process of liquidating the police vehicles and equipment. We are waiting on a professional audit of all police-related items that the city has, and this should be done by the end of this month. We will have everything inventoried, and we'll also have an idea of the value of each item, so that we can move there and be educated with what we have, because there's a lot of boxes of lord only knows what. It probably goes to something that's in another box somewhere else. And, you know, I've tried to piece it together, but, you know, he would be able to look at and be like, oh, this goes to this, and that goes to that, so we're going to leave that to the professionals to figure out for us. The Tahoe has been moved from public safety category to general use city vehicle. The Tahoe has served its purpose as a police vehicle and has been deemed to have reached its end of life in that category. Due to this, and after further research, we are able to move it without reimbursing the Splatte account. However, if the council wishes to make a transfer of funds, the net book value of the Tahoe as of January 31st, 2018, per the motion made by Ms. Reel at the February 12th meeting, we would transfer $692.67. The auditor told me that as of the end of February, it would have zeroed out, but the motion was at the time, because we were at the beginning of February, to go with the amount that was at the end of January.
Also, let the council recognize that the Tahoe served its purpose and ended life in 2018, and unless you just want to, because we've dissolved the police department, there's no reason to put money back into the public safety category. It ended life, so we're good with leaving it the way it is.
The way it is now?
Yes, we've moved it, there's going to be to move money back. We've already had, legally had it looked at, and everything will well within our rights. The vehicle was used for its purpose for over six years, and it was moved after the, after we dissolved the police department, so, which the vehicle belonged to the city anyway.
What we were doing was researching it to make sure about laws, and there are some rules in place to protect, because, for example, they wouldn't want you to go, let's say, buy a Tahoe under public safety, say it's a police vehicle, and then 30 days later, change it. That's the situation. That's how they differentiated where we stood with, with the Tahoe versus what the concern was previous to that. So, we are still researching and gathering information daily, in order that we make informed and correct decisions when it comes to this process. I will continue to update as information becomes available. This was not intended to be a voting item, but rather an item for update and discussion. However, if the council wishes to vote on something, please feel free to do so.
No need to help them, we're good.
Then wrap Mr. Return.
It is.
I did check and see if it's asleep.
So, do we have to have a vote to rescind the January, excuse me, the February 12th vote? How should we handle that?
What was the contents of that one?
That one was basically, when we were under the initial impression that we had to transfer money of some sort, there was a motion made to transfer the money as of the value of January 31st.
If needed.
If needed. So, I wasn't sure if we needed to.
If that was, if the statement was if needed, then it's not needed?
Yeah.
Because I don't think that you would have to revoke it.
Because we left it, Tina was going to, we were going to do a little check, like, you know, with the post, the Splatte law and stuff.
If that qualifier was on there, I think you're good.
We just had so much drama with that, with, you know, we needed to write a $41,000 check, that, just wanted to make sure that we're all safe. Okay, Tina?
Hold on one second, let me catch up, I'm sorry. 7B. Discuss updates on status of Cherokee Avenue Drainage Project. Good news on the status of this project. The bid packet is complete, and the advertisements for invitation to bid have been ran in both of our legal organs. These ads will run for two weeks, and I am happy to say that we have already gotten a lot of interest in the project. I mean, it went out, the day that it went out of the Pickens Progress, we already received interest in the project. The schedule is as follows. March 1st, the advertisement for invitation to bid will run in both Pickens Progress and Cherokee Tribune for two weeks. March 15th is the mandatory pre-bid meeting. This is when the companies will be informed of the project and all that is involved. March 21st will be the deadline for the bidders to submit any additional questions that they may have in regards to the project. March 23rd is the deadline, when we will provide answers to the bidder's questions. March 28th is the deadline for bids to be submitted. April 6th is the notice of award to the bidders. We will vote on who to offer the project to at the April 2nd meeting. I want to stop there for just a moment. The reason we have the bids due on March 28th is that our engineer is going to go ahead through the bids and make sure, he has, he has a checklist, a matrix, that they complete when they bid out projects. So, we will be able to, he will have it ready for us at the April 2nd meeting. So, we'll be able to look and see, this is, you know, they're, they have their insurance, they've met all the requirements, this is how much they're bidding on the project. So, rather than us having to look through piles and piles and piles of packets that are like this thick, we'll have a, for lack of a better term, an Excel spreadsheet, where we'll be able to look at it, and all the important information will be there. So, that's why we made a difference, you know, a couple of day difference for him to prepare that. So, we will vote on the April 2nd meeting, and we have a few days to give, we get, he left us a few days to give the notice of award to the bidders. April 13th is the notice to proceed. So, they will, we will give them the notice to proceed on April 13th, and July 31st is the final completion deadline for the project. In this packet that I included, which is, I'm going to say, eightyish, eightyish or so pages, I gave you all a packet to kind of take home. It's got all the requirements, all the information from the research that we've been doing over these couple of years, the, you know, just the insurance, what we're going to require. We went through and made sure that they're going to have to supply references from other jobs that are similar to this, because there's a lot of companies that may say, hey, we haven't done this before, we want to branch out. Well, we don't want to be some of these giving pig at this point in time and have an issue. We also have a long list of general terms and conditions that requires them to ensure the project, that puts the responsibility for the project being done correctly on them. It also requires them to provide their own bathroom facilities, because apparently the engineer left no detail out. Just to say, I mean, he, he did a lot of research on this, and down to all the different kinds of permitting they have to have, and insurance that they have to have, and he left no stone unturned, so that we can, we can go ahead and get this project done and not have to be worried about, oh, what's going to happen, or whatever have you, you know, are we going to do this right, or are we going to have to revisit this in five years? Because the goal was to attack this, we've waited long enough, and then to move forward on the next phases of the project, so that we can get this complete.
Yeah, I want to add, I asked for a meeting with Mr. Queen and Mr. Hamlin, within, before the March the 15th bid, so Mr. Hamlin can review the drawings that the engineer left for us, and take a look at the material that he's using and stuff like that, if there's any questions.
Yeah. Yeah, that's why I wanted to give these out today, and I really didn't want to hold up in terms of advertising and anything like that, so that we can go ahead and get this started, because now it's the point where they're lining these projects up, and they're filling up quickly, and I don't want us to wait till, you know, another six months or another year to kind of get this started, so. But I do want to thank Mr. Barry Holbert of Maxis Engineering for all his hard work on this project. He really went above and beyond, and worked through me, and did a lot of, worked with me, not for me, pardon me, but did a bunch of research, and came back to me, and he, you know, there were several times where we thought we were done, and he's like, no, wait a minute, I found something else, I like the way this is worded better, I think this will better suit the city's needs, and was really working hard to try to knock this out, so.
Good deal.
Are there any other questions on that? Except, take it all, review it, and then David, or anybody who has any questions, get back to me, and I will go ahead and get the printouts, the maps, and the utility drawings and everything, and the hydrology study information, and I'll get that all out and set it up in the room, so that anybody that wants to go through it can go through it again and review whatever. so that anybody that wants to go through it can go through it again and review whatever.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get with them and get a date. I don't think it will take about 30 minutes to review, but we'll set a date to do that here next week.
You got a video where they run the camera five.
Yes, and he has that too. And he's going to present that there. You know, that's something that they can request and ask for at the pre-bid meeting.
Anybody else have any questions about the drainage?
And remember, y'all are going to have to meet individually because three are more elected officials, so there has to be an open meeting. We'll have to advertise it. So if two people are meeting, it's three people meetings, an illegal meeting.
I can't, I can't meet with two councils?
I thought it had to be, I thought it was three elected officials, or is it three council members?
That's a look and see. Not a quorum, if it's the mayor and two council members. That's not a quorum, sorry.
Well, I just want to make sure.
That should be acceptable. It shouldn't be enough to vote.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure on that. Okay, well, I'm sorry. I was making sure nobody had any questions. Y'all were in depth into that bid packet there, kind of. Some light reading. 7C is to review draft of projects to be included in the 2018 Pickens County Joint Comprehensive Plan for the City of Nelson. Just wanted to give you, remember, we had voted on it, so this isn't a voting item. I just wanted to go over with you, the February 12th meeting, the council voted to approve the list of projects in the Community Work Program along with the edits that the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission suggested. So this has some edits. There's a couple of blank spaces left in here, which are numbers for projects that the engineer actually wanted to work with me on. One of them is the drainage, and try to get me better estimates. Because we don't want to underestimate, but we don't want to way overestimate the project. And then the Northwest Regional Commission was having a little bit of difficulty trying to come up with some numbers. So the engineer will have those numbers, and then we can just fill those in. It's not an exact science. They're not asking for like $9,999.17. That's not what they're looking for. But we want to make sure that we present reasonable numbers. Because if, you know, like if we underbid, and they're going to say, well, did you do something wrong? That your price was triple that. But at the same time, we don't want to overbid crazy, where they overestimate crazy, where they say, well, did you all not do it correctly because you came way under cost? So the engineer has agreed to do that, and to come up with some estimates on it. It's just a couple of blanks, everything else is done. Yay. So I want to go over again and just let everyone know that we are not obligated to complete all of these projects in a five-year time span. We may need to extend the time, or we may need to decide to, we may decide to remove them altogether. As time passes, the city, the needs of the city may change, and those who utilize these documents understand this. It's a kind of a planning guide. It also comes in handy when you're projects and you're looking for grants and things of that nature. So at the risk of sounding like a broken record, I want to stress that this is so that it does not become a source of contention for some people a year down the line. These projects are not set in stone. We are not obligated to do these. And this document serves as a resource to help us with planning and seeking out grants and other sources of revenue if we wish to do so. Because we constantly get the, well, you know, in this paperwork, y'all said you were going to do this, this. Well, things don't always work out that way. And I just want to make sure that people understand that. And I can, once these are completed, I want to wait till we get our estimates, and then I can make copies available. But one of the things I was excited is that they went through and looked up grants based upon the projects that we had in here that were applicable to some of the projects that we desire. Like, for example, I got to find out where it is, and I'm sorry. Oh, okay, the gateway sign that I thought about. The large Welcome to Nelson Gateway Sign at the main corridor entrance of the city, representing the city's history and heritage, similar to the one that Ball Ground has as you go into their main area. They found that we could apply for a gateway grant, which would give us $25,000 to build that and have it looking really nice. And when they checked into it, we actually fully qualified for that grant. So that would be something that, this is where this comes in handy. This is what this, the whole comprehensive plan and the work programs and the maps and all the work that we're putting into this is going to pay off. It's going to benefit the city. And it's a lot of work and time and energy. But the more work you pay, you put into this kind of thing, the more work you get out in the long run, so. And a lot of times, like this zoning map, the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission is going to go ahead and do that for us. I called a couple of other agencies that do that type of thing, and it was way more than what they could do for us. I mean, they're estimating around $1,000. The next cheapest estimate I found was $5,000. So these are little things that benefit us. Because right now, we have a zoning map that is outdated and hard to read. We just need to do updates. And if time passes, times change, state law changes constantly. So we're working at it, and we're going to improve, so. But like I said, you can see there's just some blank spots right there. A couple of them under stormwater improvements. And I should have those numbers in the next couple of days.
Well, I agree that this is a good guideline. I also want to make sure that what we've got on here is doable. So, you know, I know change is inevitable. You're bound to run into some things that, like you say, don't happen in a five-year plan, but are the things that are on here that we feel like they're doable.
I mean, most of them are things that we planned on doing anyway. I mean, it looks like a lot, but like the stormwater thing, we were planning on doing that anyway. We were already start, you know, getting started on that. And that's something that we can complete in five years. Another thing would be the community building. I think that realistically, we can complete that in five years. And after five years, what they do is they send you this back, and they say, check off what you've completed. And then they'll work with you. If you haven't completed it, do you want to still complete it? And you go back. It's an every-five-year process.
Do we have sidewalks on here to create a city center? And the other thing is, is the survey. I know that we were talking, is this another topic? Talking about the map for GDOT survey for the, all the streets and roads?
That's a little bit different than what's on here. I mean, that's something that we probably, I could ask him and see if we could add on there. But that's kind of tilting more towards the policy side of it. And they want actual projects, not policies. Of course, policies generally lead to projects. But you want to be careful about just putting, you know, they want to see something that you can actually do.
Are you going to cover that?
Yeah, there's another topic in here where we're going to cover that.
Then I'll leave comments over.
But I mean, a lot of it was the work, they just changed some of the wording. You know, they're official, you know, sometimes I was a little bit too descriptive, and other times I needed a little bit more information. And it was a learning experience for me.
I mean, I reviewed it. I reviewed it a couple of times. I just, you know, I don't see where there's going to be an issue with what's on here completing it in the next five years. I just want to know if it was, if the council or you felt like it was unrealistic.
There was a couple of things I did remove over there from the original one, that the original draft that I had, because I was like, yeah, we don't want to, we don't want to go all wild. I want to set realistic expectations. So I kind of went with what we already had planned to go with, and focused on that, and getting it done.
Can we add more to finish these projects?
Yes, definitely. Like I said, this wasn't a voting item, but I told you at the last meeting when y'all voted on it, that I will bring it back. And I'll continue to bring it, obviously, once we get those numbers in there, and they go through and do another edit. And the council will have to approve the whole kit and caboodle before it goes off to the state. You know, this will be part of this huge thing for the comprehensive plan.
Anybody have any questions on that? Okay, we'll move on to new business.
All right. Discuss and vote on a planning map to be included in the Pickens County Joint Comprehensive Plan. As part of the Joint Comprehensive Plan, we need to come up with a map to represent various areas of the city in terms of residential, commercial, industrial, and so on. In the past, it was left as all residential, which is misleading because there are areas of the city that are zoned and utilized for more than that. This is not meant to be an exact parcel and can be used as a tool for future planning. This is not set in stone and does not change our zoning map either. The purpose of this is to show that there are areas of difference in the city and can encourage development in areas where there is land to be used. An example of this would be the area in front of Laurel Lake, which is their neighborhood commercial. And the land out by Universal Stair, which is their general commercial or light industrial. Excuse me. This is quality land that could be developed and would benefit the city by bringing in revenue. While we want most of the city to remain residential, because we obviously don't want to chase people out from their homes, these large plots of land referred to before are just sitting there. I'm sorry, I had typed this up before. Mr. Calhoun was trying to get us the GIS map to use for this, but it's been a bit of a tug-of-war with him because we're on two counties. So he's, the one county does have their GIS mapping updated, the other one doesn't. And there's just all this back and forth. So I sent him a copy of our zoning map, and he said, Eureka, that's perfect. Because it gives us a general idea of where things are already. So I don't want people to panic. This is not meant to be an exact science. We want to share that we are made up of more than just houses. And we want to comply with the comprehensive plan process in every way possible because it really does open us up to receiving grants that could help us keep this city alive for generations to come. So by putting in all of this work, we're creating a path for future success and longevity for even our youngest generations. So what the map was, is basically, they just gave them the map of Nelson, and it was all one color for residential. So let's say we were to apply for some grants, and they're like, well, all they have is residential, they don't qualify for it. You know, this is the kind of thing that they look at. So what Mr. Calhoun and I worked on was basically where we want to have our town center. Traditional neighborhoods, which makes up most of the city. Suburban neighborhoods are what would be considered like subdivisions. For example, Winchester Oaks, Laurel Lake, Nelson Oaks, Nelson Ridge. And bear in mind that this zoning map is obviously a little outdated because this big pink blob up here is Winchester Oaks. So, and then the blue is industrial. And to be honest with you, the majority of this is owned by the marble plant, or the company that owns the marble plant. Not all of it, but a big part of it is. So this shows, hey, you know, this shows them, you know, hey, look, they have different areas in here. There's more to Nelson than one just big blob of yellow, which is what was constantly submitted before. So if y'all would take a moment to flip behind 8A, you'll see a copy of the map. And I actually have some extras. If anyone in the audience is interested in my Crayola skills. It was very relaxing. I had fun. I need to do that more often. Yes, I did. So these paperwork before are descriptions. Now, this is the rough draft that was sent to me. So as you can see right here, these red items are all going to be deleted. The items in blue are going to be added. But originally, Nelson just had one description, and that was it. There was really nothing that described our city. So when they would look at the city and say, you know, let's say, for example, we wanted a grant, you know, of some sort. Or we wanted to try to apply for a grant for historic preservation. They'd say, well, what are we going to preserve? It's all, you know, just houses, that's it. You know, was there anything, you know, the marble plant wasn't, you know, the history of that. None of that showed up in the original map. So the second staple is Jasper. And this was an example of traditional neighborhood area. Kind of gives the description with older housing stock, traditional developments, moderate to well-maintained, single-family. It's kind of a description and development, you know, of this. And then if you go one more staple, and like I said, I understand this is a lot of information. And I learned this in about six hours today, so I'm sure that there's questions I'll have. And then suburban, the next one is Pickens, talking about suburban infill areas. And what that is, is talking about subdivisions, things like that, which would be the Winchester Oaks, the Laurel Lake, et cetera. So we do have a variety of housing and whatnot. But this would all be tailored. So you see this one little packet for Nelson, which was originally all we were going to have. Now we will have a description for each of these four colored areas. So the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission will go through and say, hey, they want to build a town center. This is what's in their town center. You know what I mean? They got the parks, they have city hall, they have a community building. They want some, you know, they want to create a town center. It also gives them ideas that we could bring in, you know, extra income. There's subdivisions. And this orange area here also shows that there are traditional neighborhoods. So there's grants that apply to each of those things. In other words, each of those separate categories, there's things that we can apply for and look into. So we've really kind of walked through it. If you all want to make changes, you're more than welcome. I just wanted to be able to provide you something to give you an idea of what we were looking at. So like I said, it's not an exact science. We basically looked at the zoning, looked at the map, came up with, you know, we were, he was originally thinking, okay, we'll do a town center and we'll do industrial. But then he realized when he looked at the map that we do have different kinds of neighborhoods, which make us able to get different kinds of grants and things like that for improvement. So these are the ones that when him and the commission, regional commission, looked it over, and then here's what he got in those colors. So this is basically all they wanted. And then they get, they'll do all the grunt work for us. And they'll send us copies of things like this that we need to approve. Like I said, everything will get approved. They'll go through and describe these, each of these areas and things like that on this map for us.
Yeah, I think that, well, it looks great. And, you know, we do a great job looking for areas where we can, we qualify for grants. I mean, you've done a good job of that, so, and I appreciate it.
And I would have had this map up sooner, but it was something that kind of fell into my lap on Friday. I think it was Thursday or Friday. Hey, by the way, we need this map. And it was like, what map? What? What'd I miss?
Just real quick, may I, quick question? Does it love?
As long as it's quick, go ahead.
Yeah, is the colored area represent a 100% of the city of Nelson? Is it all the borders? Is that right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. I won't hesitate, because normally we have public comment, you know, later.
Thank you.
But since you have all the copies, we'll look at it. So Tina, we need to vote on something?
No, there's no voting. Well, actually, I'm sorry. If you all want to just go ahead and vote that you're happy with this, then we can just move forward. I'll let him know to go ahead and for them to work their magical on what they already have, if you're good with us.
Can we get a motion to have the...
I'll wait for it. I'll see.
I'll vote. Yes, thank you.
On to 8B. Vote on the approval of the Title VI Non-Discrimination Agreement for the Georgia Department of Transportation. Every so often, we are required to renew this agreement, which allows us to receive funding from GDOT, such as the Elmond Grant for Maintenance of Roads and Streets. As a city of less than 100,000 people, we are allowed to utilize the form which is included with this. This saves us time and money on having to draft our own agreement and then making sure that it meets all requirements. The form is fairly basic and is an agreement that we will be in compliance with the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Civil Rights Restoration Act of 1987. You know, it's behind here, it's, of course, it's a lot of lew语法 terminology. But the basic extent is, this makes us able to receive grants from GDOT. Obviously, they have to provide proof that we are in agreement with this to the federal government, how they're here to the state saying that we are giving them money and that they are agreeing to not discriminate. So... So, everybody's in compliance with everything in terms of receiving the files. So, I'm just asking the council to vote to approve the Title VI Non-Discrimination Agreement for the Georgia Department of Transportation.
Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll say it.
All better?
All right, moving right along. And here's where you wanted to, here's where you come in still. Discuss putting a plan in place for the repairs and maintenance of roads and streets. Now that we are in a place where we are organized and functioning well as a city, I would like to discuss putting a plan in place for the repairs and maintenance of roads and streets. We have SLOs funding from both counties designated for roads and streets in the city. In order to spend this money wisely, I would like to come up with a multi-year plan that we can go by. When contracting for the paving of roads, we must take into consideration that the projects will be cheaper the bigger that they are. What I mean by this is that if we do one road here and one road there, the cost will be higher, where we are more likely to get a better deal by doing several roads at a time. I've spoken to some companies who suggested dividing the city into zones. So, you will pave, for example, if we divided the city into six zones. So, we would pave the zone, and then move on to the next, come up with a plan based upon the needs of the zones on a need basis.
Exactly.
Even though it is easy to see that some roads need more work than others, I have contacted GDOT to ask for a survey of all of our roads and streets so that we can have a professional opinion to go by. They can also help us get an idea of the cost of these projects so that we can budget accordingly. They are looking at their schedule and should be contacting me by the end of next week with some dates and times that they can come out. This is not a voting item, but rather an item for updating discussion. I wanted to hear what the mayor and council would like to see happen in regards to this and hear any suggestions that you might have. Real quick, and I apologize, I meant to actually come up with an example of the zoning map, and I didn't. So, what it would be like, they would assess the roads. And let's say we have a section here where these roads need even more support. Not only is it going to be beneficial to us right now coming up with a five or six or seven or eight, 10-year plan, but the goal is to keep these things in a binder so that, you know, councils down the line, you know, 10, 15, 20 years down the line are like, okay, well, we need to repave what was repaved last. Because I have gone through file cabinets and binders, and I'm unable to find any real documentation as to what was done when. I mean, I can tell you that these roads were repaired here, that there was some work done here. The problem comes in is that, you know, streets like vehicles and everything have what they call a life, a life to them. So, this way, if we have this document, this binder, we keep this up, you know, 20 years from now, the council could come and say, all right, Zone 1 is up. We need to go ahead and do Zone 1. My goal in planning for this is not just to help us now, but to help the city going in a positive way, you know, for generations to come, to make things, to simplify the whole process and record keeping and things like that.
And also to move along. To some degree, we've been stagnant with the funds that we have. And in order to move those funds and get those funds moved out, you still have Pickens Streets, and I think that's all it covered for SLOs 1 and 2 there. And there's a chunk of money in there that's just been sitting. So, should have already been done. And I appreciate the hard work Tina's done on it. To this point, she and I talked at length about it, and she, after doing some research, decided that not only did we just need to look at an area because we're getting calls from Laurel Lake and, you know, sending PowerPoints and saying, "Hey, we haven't had anything done since 2000-something." She went ahead and looked at how other places are doing it as well and put together a plan for us that it'll keep us on track where we don't end up having to be reactive. We can be proactive in the future.
I mean, because kind of before it was done before was how, you know, so-and-so's friend or relative lived on the street, and that's how the streets took priority. And while I appreciate the close-knit family of the city, unfortunately, by doing it that way, there were so much-needed roads that were overlooked in the past. And just developing, like I said, when I'm planning for these things, I'm planning for us to be successful now, but for the city to be successful in the long run as well. Because that's, when I was looking back to try to determine records and what had been done and when had been done, I was about to pull my hair out. I mean, I'm sure somebody somewhere has it. Unfortunately, it's not here where it needs to be, so.
I'd like to see this reviewed again in April.
Yes, definitely. By then, we should have more information. My goal in some of these things is that, they're not all voting items, but I want to just keep everybody up to date so that everybody's on the same page as we move forward.
Anybody on the council have anything to add?
Okay, well, 8D is, Discuss and vote on a travel expenses policy for the city. After the newly-elected officials' training, there was some confusion as to what exactly the city pays for as far as training and travel is concerned. Rather than leave it vague, I thought it best to come up with a clear policy that will dictate how this is handled in the future. During my time with the city, including as an elected official, hotel was covered, training was covered, and mileage was covered, and never even crossed my mind that some items such as meal and incidental expenses are normally covered. My assumption now is that it was done this way due to the city's state of finances at the time. When looking to our charter, it leaves things very vague. Below is what our charter states about compensation and expenses. The mayor and council members shall receive compensation and expenses for their services as provided by ordinance and in accordance with Chapter 35 of Title 36 of the OCGA. So, next, after this description here, I included a copy of that so that you can see what our charter refers to. In summary, it states that the governing authority is authorized to determine expenses. We never, I guess, went into any more detail than that in terms of what those expenses are. So, I also did further research. And included with this as well are copies of the per diem rates and meals and incidental expenses breakdown from the U.S. General Services Administration website, or GSA for short. Note that these are just guidelines, and also note that these numbers are way out of our budget. As stewards of the taxpayers' money, I think we can all agree that we need to adhere to what our budget allows in determining amounts. And in an attempt to come up with something that the city could use, I drafted a sample policy for your review. I base this information on what I learned from other municipalities, the guidelines provided by the GSA, and what I thought would be acceptable to the city's budget. My goal in this is always is to be fiscally responsible with taxpayers' dollars. So, I'm asking the council to review the policy, make any necessary changes, and then vote to make this travel-training expenses policy official. And I'll go through the policy in a minute. Just want to go through. I just try to give y'all as much information as possible. I'm probably not dating you, but I'd rather give you too much than too little to work with. Like I said, there's just, they give you basic government guidelines. And if you look at these, they may be swat a little bit because I was trying to figure out ways that we could fit these in our budget. But then it does say in here that municipalities have to base their amounts on what their budget allows. That's what that OCGA law was, was for them to, you know, to come up with an amount that would work without causing any problems. Y'all want to turn to the last page before 8E, and we'll go over the policy. Might be sticking, I'm sorry. So, travel, training-travel expenses policy. The City of Nelson understands that there is state-mandated training for newly-elected officials as well as employees. The city agrees that the expenses that are as a result of this training will be allocated in the yearly budget as finances allow. In order to provide clarity and definition to these expenses, the following will apply. Number 1, the city will cover the cost of training. Number 2, the city will cover the cost of reasonable hotel accommodations. If a person wishes to stay at a more expensive hotel or resort, they will be personally responsible for covering the cost. If a person wishes to stay additional days beyond what is considered necessary, they will be responsible for covering those costs. Number 3, the city will cover mileage to and from training at the state rate at the time of travel as long as the person is using their personal vehicle. Number 4, if a person chooses to use the city vehicle, they will not receive a mileage check, but may provide a receipt for reimbursement of fuel costs to get to and from training. When using the city vehicle, they are expected to return in a timely manner and not use the vehicle for recreational purposes. Not that I'm worried about anybody here having wild parties, but I figured the more, you know, if we cover it, then people won't come back and say, "Well, what about this, this, and this?" Number 5, the city will pay meal and incidental expenses at the rate of $30 a day on which training takes place, and $15 a day on days of travel to and from training. If a person chooses to stay beyond the time of training and what is considered necessary, they will not receive payment on those days. These guidelines are set in place in order to provide clarity, to set reasonable guidelines, to help define budgetary needs, and to ensure wise spending of the taxpayers' money.
Tina worked on this, and I'll say this. I did help write the employee handbook for North Health, the corporate company. And we looked at your average cost because usually when you train, just like we went to training this time, breakfast was covered, lunch was covered, so you really just tap your evening meal.
Yeah.
And that will be the case with most trainings, you know, the state training.
And I mean, like I said, I didn't even know because, you know, when I took my vehicle, I was using the mileage check. I just assumed that, you know, I guess it was a merit on my behalf that it was supposed to cover food and gas. So, whatever I had leftover for gas, I bought peanut butter and jelly, and that's what I ate. Or, you know, ham or something, like a local bread and munchie. Like, I don't mind that. And I mean, but at the same time, we're at a place now where we can, we can up the ante. You know what I mean? And I really think that this is something that we can move into and show. I mean, other cities have sent me theirs and kind of comparing their budgets. And, I mean, I got them from big giant cities that have, you know, huge budgets, and we're just not that way. So, I try to compare and get ideas of the wording. And like I said, Mayor Green really helped me too because she has the knowledge in writing different policies like that, so.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll say it.
All better? Thank you. At this time, I'd like to recognize anybody that has.
Oh, wait, one more.
One more?
One more.
Did I get ahead? I caught ahead of you. I'm sorry.
It's all right. It's fine. I just have to make this tree-killin' worth it here. Discuss and if necessary, vote on a solution to the parking on sidewalks around the city. Recently, I have received quite a few complaints in regards to people parking their vehicles on sidewalks around the city. I even had a school bus driver call my complaint because her students have to walk out in the middle of Pickens Street while it's still dark in the morning to get to their bus stop. There are a number of issues that this problem brings about. First and foremost is the safety of those that walk in our city, including children on the way to their bus stop. Second is the damage that this causes to the sidewalks for which the city is liable. Ask the city of Kent, and they're in the middle of some sidewalk litigation as we speak. The taxpayers as a whole should not have to fund sidewalk repairs that are caused by the minority. So, I have sent letters to a couple of the chronic offenders. Sorry, I couldn't come up with a better term than that. I was blustered. Hoping this would solve the problem. And while a few have complied, it seems for most to work only temporarily. I can say that the majority of those that do this and are not compliant are renters rather than owners of the property. And I found that by speaking to the owners, the good news is is they are getting on their renters. So, that's good. That has definitely helped. I don't wish to pick on people. And I understand that some of the properties around the city are small and leave very little room to park, but our arrangement should be made. Overall, those that are doing this on a regular basis have plenty of room on their property to park, but for some reason choose not to do so. I've considered purchasing no parking on sidewalk signs, but this is very costly. And with the disregard for regular signs around the city, I'm not sure this would be an effective approach. While this is, it's common sense not to do this, and maybe even illegal, which apparently it is, and I'll get into that in a moment. Perhaps an official ordinance in regards to this might be happy, might be helpful, something in black and white for people to see that what they are doing is not acceptable. And note that I did this last week, and I have found in our book, in our code book, that we actually have something already pertaining to this. And then our wonderful city attorney found me the, found us the OCGA code, which basically says that you're not supposed to park on the sidewalk. So, it's not just a city thing, it's a state thing. And like I said, I want to repeat again, I'm not trying to pick on people on that. Like, I can understand you have a birthday party, you know, or something like that, and people are coming, and they're just there for a couple of hours, moving. And there's people that have a great big yard, they have a paved driveway or a gravel driveway, and they don't ever put their car, and it is clear across the sidewalk. And I know because I walk my dogs, I spend the majority, Kelsey walks her dogs, straight on down Pickens Street is about the basically, the only option you have to avoid the parking. And it prevents Ricky from maintaining the right of way because obviously you don't want to, you know, mess up people's vehicles when you're mowing or cleaning or cleaning drainage or something like that. You don't want to get near somebody's personal vehicle. You don't want that liability. So, I mean, this is something that I was kind of hoping would, I would be able to solve without this. But basically, I want to bring it forth to the council because when I wrote this, there was a bus driver who recontacted me, and then today I just had another one contact me.
We do have, we have alternative parking around the city, right? So, when you said you're going to be sending out letters for.
Yeah, and then I think I'll just let them know because, I mean, we have, like, we have the marble, like, up there where the marble offices is, if they need to park up there, if they have an extra vehicle or something. I don't, we're not using it at this point, and I don't see it to be a problem. And maybe try to suggest that and see. And I'm not talking about people, like I said, coming for a few hours. You've got a lot of family in front of you. If that happens, that's not an issue. But what I'm talking about is the cars that just sit there on the work trucks and their trailers. And it's really, it's cracking the sidewalk and making the sidewalks uneven. God forbid if someone, if they were not there, they go to work, and someone's walking down that sidewalk and trips and falls. That is, that is our, from what I understand, the sidewalks are owned by the city, so it's our responsibility.
That's our problem.
So, when GDOT comes up and does this survey, and I'm just taking this a little off track, when they come up and do the survey, will they survey the sidewalks that we have too?
I can ask them to do that. They mainly do roads and streets, but they said they have a couple of people that do sidewalk planning as well, so I'll see if I can.
I'd like to look at a couple of those places where you said there's some damage. And I'd also like to look up at Mr. Caldwell where he called in and did the complaint. I'd like to make sure the water's not pitching off into his driveway. He's an elderly gentleman, and he can't get out there and maintain that. And if it's, if it's water that's being directed, I just want to check it out. If it is, then let's fix it.
Yeah. So, we will start with that. I will go ahead, now that I have this information, that there's rules already in place, I can go ahead and accompany that with a letter. And, but like, most of them, once they get hold of the property owner, it's not really an issue because they're going to their tenant like, hey, you know, you need to stop this. There's a couple of areas, one in particular where the lot is very small, but if they clean their trash up, they'd be able to fit a car in it. So, I mean, I'm trying to work with them. I'm being, I don't want to pick on anybody. I don't. That's not my goal. But my goal is also to not have to hear the sirens that some dog got hit while walking to their bus stop in the morning.
One more thing too, with regards to maintenance and that gate that we're looking at. Are we looking at getting something done this month with that?
I can if you want.
Yeah. I just like to go ahead and see. I don't think it's going to cost that much. You know, but I'd like to just.
As long as y'all want an agreement, you want like poles there extended out beyond the road with a chain across it, that's sufficient. If that's sufficient, then, you know, keep people driving around it.
You know, what are we going to do, take it up and down?
That's the only problem that we need to figure out.
There's walking trails back there too.
Yeah, the walking trail is back there. And Mr. Fawcett leaves at 4:00, so, I mean, in terms of when it's getting lighter out, I don't know how y'all want to handle that. Because, I mean, it's getting, we have what, daylight savings time this coming weekend, so it'll stay light sooner rather than later till about 9:00 o'clock at night.
Well, let me ask you this. And I went back there, and there is, the walking trail is back there, and there is places to park back there. But after 4:00 in the afternoon, is it, there's places to park up front? You don't have to park back there, correct? is that there's places to park up front? You don't have to park back there, correct?
And don't they have any ball practice or something like that?
Have we had any ball practice?
I've had some people contact me, work to start. I mean, we can always put something in place and move forward from there and decide from there. I mean, I live here, I leave at 5, you know, but there's, you know, like, that's, that was my biggest concern, with having someone to go ahead and close that off without people, you know, because when it stays, that's something we're definitely going to have to figure out how we're going to assess that.
We'll talk on that.
Okay.
Can we fix out a big parking area in the back of that pool of things to park? But if you blow it out, it ain't parked back there.
Yeah, the problem is that I'm going back there doing things I shouldn't be doing, and it's something that, you know.
I have a camera back there. I just wish I had a speaker so that when, you know, something rolled up on there, like a microphone, where I could be like, "Do your parents know where you're at right now?" Or something.
Camera pickups, tag numbers and stuff on that?
Yeah, I picked up some, yeah.
Might we restart in accordance to the-
I mean, so what I'll do is I'll come back with prices on several alternatives to you, alternatives to you all at the next meeting, and then we'll kind of go more into it and figure out a method that we can, when, when this happens, what that would. Because, I mean, I did get the camera put back there for that reason. And, I mean, I have had people say there was someone out there at such and such a time, and, I mean, people might not be, I mean, I check it, and if there's something, I mean, I record it, but a lot of times the times are off, or it's like, you know, 6 o'clock in the evening, someone was parked back there. Well, but at 6 o'clock in the evening, you know, you know.
Look, we're not supposed to sign, I mean, no traffic after a certain hours, vehicle traffic.
Yeah, we could do that as well, yes, Jeff.
And if they go out there-
How effective do you feel that signs are?
Well, if you set the rules that somebody-
So if somebody violates it, then?
You could call it. Well, obviously, you could call law enforcement. If the rule's being violated, it makes a clear rule.
I don't think anybody's going back there past nine o'clock, be-
No. Therefore, put up a gate at 4 o'clock, nobody can utilize it until, you know, the next day or something. That's my only thought.
We'll think on that.
We'll do that, we have to do that.
Okay, alright.
So, do we need to vote on anything pertaining to the sidewalks? Are we, just discuss it?
No. Yeah, just discuss it. I just wanted to make you all aware of the situation, and now that, like I said, I had had this additional information, that would definitely be helpful, because I like to include that when you send the letters. It tends to have more precedence than if you're just like, "Please don't do it," just because, you know.
So, public appearance, we have public appearance. Please read through all of the rules and regulations.
How are you?
Good, thank you. Station name and address.
Keith Johnston, and what?
Your name and address.
1815 Pickens Street. I had one question on step 2 of the water process. I'm here for a neighbor who lives on Cherokee. He asked, he couldn't be here tonight, he asked me to ask, will, at any point in that process, the people that live on Cherokee be invited to be a part of that discussion?
They have, we have, we have had public, several public hearings and things like that previous to this, because this has been going on for two years, so we've had-
Yeah, I think he's been notified, you know, other than me coming here and sort of listening, he has been notified. I don't know what the process came up with, he's not, but-
Is there a reason why he hasn't contacted City Hall?
He's a busy guy, and he kind of doesn't want to, maybe, I don't know, talk about, I don't know, make sense, be part of-
I would suggest, yeah, I would suggest if he gives us a call or gets with Tina, I mean, we can give him information or help him out with it, or-
Specifically on the second step she had mentioned, where you're going to invite to go over in the early stages, is that all of the somebody, people coming in, seeing and listening?
We already did that. We already saw that, we already did the going over it, and the second, the second step is for the people that are doing the bids.
This is now, we're at a completely different phase now. So, we're at the phase where the engineers already put everything together. Unfortunately, this took a long time. Don't go wrong, wasn't here then. But it took a long time, and we already have the drawings, the council's already reviewed it once. We've got new council now, so they're going to take a look at it. The bid packages have already gone out, are there in the process of going out. And then, once we get those back to council, they'll be myself, Miss Monahan, and two members that will review those. Mr. Handy, who's very qualified, although not an engineer probably, but he's very qualified with drainage and stuff, that's what he does for a living. And then Mr. Queen, who also is qualified with building, building inspections and stuff. So he, both of those guys will be available, and they'll review everything. They will make sure that the equipment that's being used, and again, we talked about it, it'll be in multi-phases and-
Right. That's what I said, I think his property was really negatively impacted by the drainage and so.
I think he'll be happy once it gets done.
And like I said, if you have that person contact me, I can go over that information with them. I can show them the drawings and stuff that we've had, the information that we've had up to date, so.
You know, thank you for the document. I appreciate it. It really helps with the discussion to make, put perspective in there to, thank you. And then, last thing, Tina, you had a list of projects for the city, some green stripes. Is that available to get a copy of projected projects, that wish list?
Let me get the final numbers on that.
Do you get those numbers?
Yes. Let me get the final numbers on that, and then I'll have some up here, and I'll let you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Lamar Kellet, 10005 Laurel Lake Drive, Nelson. I have two or three items that are not there as long as last week, last week. I noticed that we never have any participation of the Jasper police at our meetings, like, giving reports. What is their involvement?
Jasper police is-
As we now stand.
You mean Pickens County?
Oh, yeah, Pickens County.
I have invited them to participate, and no one has responded up to this point in time. They have been invited to participate. It's not a requirement.
I understand. We just-
We have reached out to them.
Beginning to, you know, look like this is the police force.
I agree with that.
As good as they are. Second item. Any item tonight concerning vehicles? Have the other two police vehicles been already handled?
They've not been audited. We're waiting on a professional audit of all public safety equipment, vehicles and equipment that we have before we do anything with that.
Okay. And just while we're talking about vehicles from the past, how about the Suzuki truck? Is it now functional?
No, it's still in shock. I talked with them about it the other day.
Concerning that, there is a discrepancy here. This area up east of Olmerson Road, beyond the entrance down to the Sina Plant, all of that is industrial, none of that's R40, which is labeled R40.
Well, this was the official map that we had on file. I didn't alter this in any way, shape, or form. This was the map that was directly from our-
Where is he talking about, Tina?
See, where they say R40, down here at the bottom of the page.
That's where Nelson Oaks is. The one little tail over there is where Nelson Oaks is located.
When you, when you see where Laurel Lake subdivision is, there's a line right across the southern end of that, which extends across Canton Road, which forms the city limits. And if you look where you've got some blue and you've got R40, if that's the original map, that's-
Could you hold up, could you hold up the paper and bring to the part here?
The part right here.
Show me. Show the calendar.
Right here.
That's where Nelson Oaks is.
No, Nelson Oaks is... Is back up here where you, you see the little-
Because that little thing in the arms there-
The little, the little road that jogs down between the little peninsula there that says R40, and the other section to the left of that, which says R40. What I'm saying there is no residential zoning in that particular part of the city.
Okay, well, this is the zoning map, the official zoning map of the city, so unless something changed and no one bothered to update the book.
Must be what happened, because most of this was annexed.
Yes, but this is actually-
That's Nelson Oaks Drive.
Yeah, this is where Nelson Oaks is.
Okay.
That's an existing subdivision, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, okay. I withdraw my comment then, because that is all light industrial, where the blue is shining. Sorry about that. Get people home.
Okay. No, it was a little bit confusing for me as well when you were looking at it, just because like, if you look at this, I'm like Winchester Oaks is a little squiggly way up there.
Yes, it's not even a-
But that's why on that project list, one of our things is to update it. You know, so that we can, so that the Winchester Oaks folks are not just a little squiggly in the sky, they actually have streets and everything.
Tina, I appreciate the work you put into this.
Oh, no problem. I had fun.
I know. You did a good job, and I appreciate it.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thanks. I'd also like to add at this time, we're not going to have monitors, and we're not going to have TVs. So, we're a small community. We are, we operate on a small budget, and at this time, we don't have dollars in there. So, we will provide some of these handouts, like tonight, for those of you that have come. And if there's other questions that you have, feel free to give Tina a call or myself a call, and we'll help you out with that. Okay? Anybody else have anything? Take that over and note, and we'll adjourn the meeting.
Oh, somebody has a question.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Oh, favorit?